We'll call to order this special regular board meeting of the Woodford County Board of Education. Please let the record reflect that all members are present, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, we can't have this.
Correct. There are no.
Well, then, we couldn't do it.
Correct. But you can decide there are no.
Okay. Do we have any communications? Okay. We have no proposed amendments to the agenda. Mr. Hawkins, we will have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Edlin, and good evening and welcome to our February Board of Education meeting. Believe it or not, we only have five weeks until spring break, and then just seven more weeks after that until the end of the school year. This year is certainly flying by. Field testing is taking place this week in all of our schools. Next year, the state assessment is transitioning to online. So this gives our students an opportunity to experience this type of test before it goes live during the 2021 school year. On March 10th, our sophomores and juniors will take the statewide ACT. This is also Industry Day for our seniors as they get to tour some of our manufacturing facilities here in Woodford County. We are certainly very appreciative of our area businesses and John Soper at EDA for their support in Industry Day. At tonight's meeting, we are pleased to recognize our top three spellers from the district spelling bee held on January 23rd. Each elementary school has a school contest, and the top three from each site advance to the district spelling bee. This is always a great event and a nice way for students to showcase their spelling skills. We also will be honoring one of our board members this evening, Sherri Springgate, for obtaining Levels 3, 4, and 5 certification in the Kentucky School Board Association's Academy of Studies. Winter sports and activities are winding down over the next several weeks. Congratulations to our Woodford County High School Matt Jackets for finishing seventh in the state at the wrestling competition, our swimmers and divers who advanced to the state championship this past weekend, and to our academic team for winning the regional quick recall and placing second overall in the regional Governor's Cup competition. Good luck to our boys and girls basketball teams as they play in the district tournament on Wednesday this week. The girls tip off at 6:00, and the boys will follow at 7:30. Both games will be held at Anderson County High School. Thank you again for being here this evening. It's an honor to serve as your superintendent, and I know with all of us working together, we can become the flagship school district in Kentucky.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I'm going to start off. I think some of our spellers aren't here, so I'm going to start off with our board recognition first. The Kentucky School Board Association, KSBA, has awarded certificates of advanced training and school leadership to Sherri Springgate. Ms. Springgate has achieved Level 3, 4, and 5 certification in KSBA's Academy of Studies. Kentucky law mandates varying hours of training based on board members' years of service. The lower levels of KSBA's Academy of Studies include courses such as the basics of the board's role, school finance, superintendent evaluation, and facilities planning. As a board member advances in the certification process, the courses become more specific to issues such as evaluating the board's own effectiveness, doing advanced budget planning, becoming better advocates for children, and grasping the board's responsibilities in school and student assessment and accountability. "On behalf of the association and Kentucky's 862 locally elected school board members, we are grateful to these individuals for their substantial investments of time and attention in achieving Academy of Studies certification," said KSBA President Ronnie Holmes, a Graves County school board member. "This level of commitment to professional learning will pave the way for even more success in our Commonwealth School District." So congratulations, Ms. Springgate.
Hey. She knocked three off in the year. So here's your Level 3.
Thank you.
Level 4.
Thank you.
Level 5, and I think there's some pins in there.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Next, we want to honor our spelling bee. Are they all here? Not quite yet.
We've got one.
We've got one.
One's sick, so she won't be here, but...
And the other one, we're not sure if she's going to make it.
She's going to be here, but she's just going to be a little bit late. So as she gets here...
We'll bring her up even...
Okay. So we can recognize her a little later.
Okay. The district spelling bee is held each year in Woodford County. The contestants in the spelling bee are the three finishers from each local school for a total of 12 students. I went this year. It's so fun. I would encourage anybody to go. But our winners this year were Kirsten Hutchison, placed third place from Northside, and I think she's the one we may see a little bit later. She's sick. The second-place winner from Southside was Ashlyn Derringer. And I do believe our first-place winner, Maya Williams, from Hunter Town is here. So come on up, Maya. I'm going to shake your hand. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Good job.
How are you? Congratulations.
Our score probably was...
Which was what?
Uh, good one. I didn't know that.
Oh, I... I know what it was. Go ahead.
Very proud of you. It's very hard to do.
For sure. And it was the...
About six rounds with the final two.
Yes, very stressful.
And back and forth. It was amazing.
What was the winning word finally? Do you remember your winning word?
Very nervous. Very nervous.
I couldn't believe you were nervous.
Do you remember the winning word? The winning word, the championship word I had was penalty, and the winning word I had was banishment.
Very, very nice. Congratulations. Danny, you want to go picture with her? Bob, you want to picture? Or you want to wait till... The other young placer may be here a little later. Yeah, Danny, I think we're going to wait and see if the second-place person comes. All right. And we'll recognize the other young lady when she does, when she's able to get here. All right. Next, we have on our agenda our treasurer's report, approved January financial report. Ms. Smith?
Did it last?
It's already been presented.
Are we going to vote on it? Do we have any... Do we have a motion to approve?
Still waiting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or any questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay. Next, we have the opportunity for audience public comment. I think Angel's getting the list. All right. The first person who has signed up is Sarah McCowen. Ms. McCowen?
Good evening. At last week's planning...
Yes. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Let me remind you that you have three minutes, and Mr. Hawkins is going to be our timer.
Awesome. At last week's planning meeting, we learned that Mr. Wells was in the process of working to make updates to the Woodford County Schools Code of Conduct. I can't think of a better opportunity for the board to do the same. As I understand it, the board does not currently have a code of conduct for themselves. While it may seem like common sense and unnecessary, we've seen evidence over the last several months that it is absolutely needed. Page 15 of the Woodford County Public Schools Student Handbook outlines responsibilities for teachers and principals, including exhibiting professional behavior in action and speech. On page 16, parents are asked to demonstrate respect for all school personnel. Page 18 of the handbook lists conduct deemed offensive and includes profanity and malicious remarks, including cursing, intimidation, insults, or other abuse, whether verbal or written. Although this applies at all schools sponsored or related activities and on school buses, this handbook is intended as a guide or sets minimum requirements. Schools may further amplify and detail their expectations. So I am challenging each one of you to do the same. Create a board member code of conduct. Whether you like it or not, whether you agree with it or you don't, you hold a public office. The standards for conduct should be higher because you are an agent of Woodford County Public Schools. It's time we expect the same behavior from our board that we do for our students, teachers, principals, and superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who's requested to speak is Candy Neal on budget cuts.
Thank you. Comments by Mr. Wilson on the February 6, 2020, board meeting left me curious and in search for the truth. Paraphrasing his comments in the next few comments I'm going to make, Mr. Wilson led the public to believe that he had repeatedly asked Mr. Hawkins for his recommendations of a comprehensive list of prioritized cuts should they need to be made. Mr. Wilson then stated that he had requested the help of the Chinawith Law Firm, which charges us $135 an hour to draw up an agenda item to get the information that he had requested multiple times of Mr. Hawkins but had yet to receive. Mr. Wilson then stated later in the meeting that he wasn't sure about one of the items that he had requested, but that Mr. Hawkins should contact Mr. Chinawith again at $135 an hour for clarification. After submitting an open records request to see all communication between Mr. Hawkins and board members regarding budget cuts, it is apparent that Mr. Hawkins and the finance staff have been very forthcoming and timely with all official requests made by this board. On January 15, 2020, Mr. Wilson did send an official letter asking for cuts to be provided to the board. In an email dated January 17, 2020, Mr. Hawkins noted that to provide the list of cuts, he needed the full board to establish a set of criteria and services that the board wants to maintain and those that could be reduced or eliminated. It should also be noted that this process requested by Mr. Hawkins was the same process followed in the past when dealing with the reduction in staff contract days and pension legislation. At the February 18 meeting, Mr. Hawkins, in his normal above-and-beyond manner, provided you, the board, with the cuts, the ramifications, and a recommendation. In his presentation, he proved once again beyond any measure that we should not be restricting general fund money. It is not wise. It is not fiscally responsible. Over the past year, it's been very upsetting to watch the eroding of ethics and teamwork by this board. Woodford County Public Schools is at a crossroad. We need a new high school to ensure our students the best possible education. However, we must be wise stewards of our money and do the absolute best for this community. If this means putting the brakes on this and waiting, then that is exactly what we need to do. There is no shame in stopping this process now before our children pay the price in the future for bad decisions today. Thank you.
All right. The next person who is requested to speak is Charlene Souter, and she wants to speak about graduation.
Well, I came tonight with a letter to read, but however, on my way here, I checked Buzzmail, and all my questions were answered, I'm assuming. It says graduation is Saturday, May 23 at 9:00 a.m. at All Tech Arena Horse Park. So I'm hoping that is written in stone now, and we can go ahead with our project graduation plans, scheduling our vendors, and all of our contacts that are going to help with project graduation. And if that is the date and the time, we want to thank the board and Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Arnold, and Mr. Ellis, who helped us with this situation, because I know it was a unique situation this year because of the conflict of the communication with Woodford County and the horse arena. So we think Project Graduation thinks this is the greatest outcome that we could have gotten, and we appreciate your help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Souter. Next, William Foley, who wants to speak on the budget.
Thank you. Board members, I will be brief. I should say ditto to the speaker a minute ago, who was very eloquent in her remarks. You're facing major problems in trying to decide how to handle this budget. Part of it goes back to skipping a 4% tax increase for two years, and that effect has carried on to you. That's not your fault. That's not your problem, except you've got to deal with that problem or something the board did. I would encourage you not to do the same thing to future boards by continuing this unnecessary commitment of restricting general fund dollars for building a school that no one else in the state has ever tried to do. And tonight's agenda includes doing site evaluation to break ground on a building, just as you did last month, start a geothermal assessment, which was dollars that could have been put back into the general fund. And I think the whole thing needs to come to stop until you set the budget and decide where you're going. A meeting is scheduled for March 3, and we appreciate that, but I hope that you don't continue to throw dollars down in this hole to build a building that may or may not occur. Certainly, a building is needed, but not in the manner that you have chosen to do. I encourage you to follow the recommendations of your superintendent and your financial officers and unrestrict the dollars and balance this budget. Thank you.
Okay. Those are the only people that signed up. Is there anyone else? Great. Thank you all so much. Next on the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Well, I'm going to remove item H. I move to remove item H so that we can discuss it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any... All opposed? Or all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we will remove item H from the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda as item... Okay? I guess. So having done that, are there any other removals from the consent agenda? Right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moving.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question, and I apologize. So we're on the consent agenda?
Yes.
And you want to remove item H?
Right. Just to remove it to regular agenda so we can discuss it. Usually, we remove those, the code of conduct suggested updates.
Okay.
Yes. I just have a few questions about that, so I'm removing it from the consent agenda so that it will be part of the regular agenda, and we'll address it individually as opposed to the group consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion about the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes 5 to nothing. All right. Now, we move on to our regular agenda. Mr. Hawkins, you want to get us through this?
Sure. Item A there is, we would ask for you to accept the notification of personnel matters that have occurred since the January board meeting.
Still moving. Madam Chairperson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Go ahead.
Item B is to, we would ask for you to accept the notification of payment of bills.
Still moving.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Springgate. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question, and I apologize. So we're on the consent agenda?
Yes.
And you want to remove item H?
Right. Just to remove it to regular agenda so we can discuss it. Usually, we remove those, the code of conduct suggested updates.
Okay.
Yes. I just have a few questions about that, so I'm removing it from the consent agenda so that it will be part of the regular agenda, and we'll address it individually as opposed to the group consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion about the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Then we have the minutes. I think we were all here.
We're all three, so yes, they could be approved in one motion.
Still moving.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Springgate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Then we have the minutes. I think we were all here.
We're all three, so yes, they could be approved in one motion.
Still moving.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Springgate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Go ahead. I'm just going to let you get us...
On item D, we would ask for you to approve the warding of the bid only to Toshiba for copy machine and service. That contract is still being reviewed by Mr. Chinawith, and so the contract is not ready this evening, but we would ask for you to award the bid.
Still moving.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Springgate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to... Okay. All right. Item, go ahead.
Item E, we would ask for you to approve the BG 4, which is the first of two closeout documents for the district-wide security improvements, BG 18330.
Still moving. Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Bradley, a second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. We're going to take a little break in the middle of our regular agenda because we have our... There's a spelling bee placer here.
And let's have a round of applause for Ashlyn Derringer for...
Yes.
Second place. Come on up, Ashlyn.
Good job. We're a little bit behind, so go ahead.
Do you want to...
Okay. I think we're going to take another quick break and get a picture with Mr. Vlog, with Maya and Ashlyn, so they don't have to stay for the whole viewing.
Were these some of the things we wanted to take off?
Yeah. All right. Okay. I thought I was just supposed to...
Yeah, because we took out the other one after last week.
Okay. Thank you, girls, again for coming. Good job. All right. We will resume our regular agenda. Item F. I'm going to let you just... This was the bid, early site package for new WCHS Phase 1 BG 19353. I think there were... I'm going to move that we table this motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we... I think this was a request of...
We had an opportunity for Mr. Hawkins, Ms. Smith, the...
Architect.
...Architects and Trace Creek project managers to meet last Thursday and had a really good and productive meeting, and at the conclusion recommended that we table items F, G...
The other one, I think, got taken off already, Mr. Hawkins. So that one we managed to get.
So items F and G at the conclusion of that meeting.
All right. So there's the motion and a second to table item F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Let's go through this again with item G. I will make a motion that this item G be tabled. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by me, second by Mr. Wilson. I think Danny kind of explained that. Is there any further discussion on tabling item G? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Item H, authorize the superintendent to work with Chinawith Law Office to draft a long-term lease for tennis courts at Falling Springs. Mr. Hawkins, you talked about this a little bit last week. Do we have a motion to approve... Mr. Wilson moves that we approve item H. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, we'll do the discussion. A second by Ms. Springgate. Any discussion?
I just wanted to... Got an email today from Mr. Picture with Parks and Recreation. They did receive another grant, which will allow them to install lights.
Absolutely.
So I think that's a great thing, but still would like to move forward with our contribution for the utilization of the tennis court.
Okay. So you... When we approve this, you'll be sending the contract to Chinawith. He'll look it over, and then we'll hopefully have it on the March agenda.
He's going to draft the lease. Say it won't be me.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know if we were just use something... Okay, great. Well, hopefully, we'll have it by March.
I think we've got a skeleton of it from when we've done leases before.
From when we've done these kinds of things before.
Yes.
Yeah. So, okay, great. So all in favor of motion H, authorize the superintendent to work with Chinawith Law Office to draft a long-term lease for tennis courts at Falling Springs. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5 to nothing. Item I, no additional work to take place on the new high school until the 2021 budgetary decisions are finalized by the board. Ms. Springgate?
Yes. I'm pleased that the agenda items related to the high school construction project were tabled this evening. Given the fact that we are facing a probable deficit of over $1 million this year and an even larger deficit next year, I think it is wise to put the high school project on hold until we gather more input from the community and make some definite decisions about our current and future budget deficits. Also, it is my hope that all project considerations, including renovation, will be given due consideration as we move forward. If we do not place a hold on this project, I worry what message that will send to the community. I've requested and reviewed the architect bills up to this point, and if I've calculated correctly, it looks like we've already spent nearly $400,000 on this high school project. Until there is an actual financial plan in writing and a way to pay for this high school and until the 2021 budget decisions are finalized, I believe that no more expenditure should be approved. Therefore, I'm making a motion that no additional work take place on the new high school until the 2021 budgetary decisions are finalized by this board.
There's a motion by Ms. Springgate. Is there a second? There's no second. The motion dies for lack of a second. Item J, protocol requesting that executive sessions are held at the end of the agenda. Ms. Springgate?
Yes. Since I've been on the board, our practice has been to hold these executive sessions at the close of regular meetings unless there's been extenuating circumstance. I can only recall one or two times over the past 10 years that we've had executive sessions before a board meeting. I'm bringing this up because the attendance in the past several meetings has been much higher than normal, and personally, I really do appreciate this level of participation. I'm always glad to have our stakeholders involved. But it's frustrating and inconvenient for people to show up to our meetings and then wait for an undetermined amount of time for the meeting to actually start. It's not respectful of our constituents' time, so I'm asking for future executive sessions to be held at the close of our meeting or on another date and time to prevent the unnecessary wait by those attending the meetings. There's no reason we cannot have held last week's executive session from 5 to 6. Again, this would be much more respectful than having people wait for an undetermined amount of time until we come out of a closed session. So I'm making a motion that we adopt a protocol requesting that executive sessions are held at the end of the meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. There's a motion by Ms. Springgate, a second by Ms. Bradley. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering, so would this be like a formal policy and procedure or just an informal protocol? And do you want to... You mentioned that last week's could have been held prior to, so are we advocating for...
to draft a long-term lease for tennis courts at Falling Springs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes five to nothing. Item I, no additional work to take place on the new high school until the 2021 budgetary decisions are finalized by the board. Ms. Springgate?
Yes. I'm pleased that the agenda items related to the high school construction project were tabled this evening. Given the fact that we are facing a probable deficit of over $1 million this year and an even larger deficit next year, I think it is wise to put the high school project on hold until we gather more input from the community and make some definite decisions about our current and future budget deficits. Also, it is my hope that all project considerations, including renovation, will be given due consideration as we move forward. If we do not place a hold on this project, I worry what message that will send to the community. I've requested and reviewed the architect bills up till this point, and if I've calculated correctly, it looks like we've already spent nearly $400,000 on this high school project. Until there's an actual financial plan in writing and a way to pay for this high school, and until the 2021 budget decisions are finalized, I believe that no more expenditure should be approved. Therefore, I'm making a motion that no additional work take place on the new high school until the 2021 budgetary decisions are finalized by this board.
There's a motion by Ms. Springgate, is there a second? There's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second. Item J, protocol requesting that executive sessions are held at the end of the agenda. Ms. Springgate?
Um, yes. Since I've been on the board, our practice has been to hold these executive sessions at the close of regular meetings unless there's been extenuating circumstance. I can only recall one or two times over the past 10 years that we've had executive sessions before a board meeting. I'm bringing this up because the attendance in the past several meetings has been much higher than normal, and personally, I really do appreciate this level of participation. I'm always glad to have our stakeholders involved. But it's frustrating and inconvenient for people to show up to our meetings and then wait for an undetermined amount of time for the meeting to actually start. It's not respectful of our constituents' time. So I'm asking for future executive sessions to be held at the close of our meeting or on another date and time to prevent the unnecessary wait by those attending the meetings. There's no reason we cannot have held last week's executive session from five to six. Again, this would be much more respectful than having people wait for an undetermined amount of time until we come out of a closed session. So I'm making a motion that we adopt a protocol requesting that executive sessions are held at the end of the meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Springgate, a second by Ms. Bradley, any discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering, so would this be like a formal policy and procedure or just an informal protocol? And do you want to, you mentioned that last week's could have been held prior to, so are we advocating for a special meeting rather than at the end or at the end?
Simply, we've always done it through a protocol in the past, so I think just in order to be respectful of people's time and, you know, just to kind of take that into account. To hold them at the end of the meeting like we traditionally do is fine. If there's some sort of an emergency and it needs to be done differently, then I would just suggest doing it before the actual meeting, you know, something like that. But I don't think we need a policy or a procedure to just, you know, be courteous and do that at the end of the meeting. Just a protocol, I think, would be fine.
What would, what would you consider an emergency? Just so we, I mean, I think when we do these things, we need to have some kind of definition of what we're talking about, because.
I would think typically an emergency would be a special call session that would be on a different night from a regular meeting or a planned meeting. So we have the meetings that are already scheduled for the year that we approved in December. So any of those meeting dates, I would think we could just do it at the end of the agenda. If there was some sort of an emergency and we needed to have, say, a special session tomorrow, obviously, we wouldn't have the public here for that, and they wouldn't have to wait till the end of the agenda.
I think we also need to keep in mind, if we have it at the end of a meeting, that we're paying the attorney to sit here, and the public has already expressed that they're unhappy with the amount of money that we spend with our attorney as it is.
Well, I think you can have the attorney say, we anticipate this meeting lasting until, you know, 7:00 PM. So if we all have to sit for a few minutes and wait until 7:00 PM when the attorney comes, that would be okay with me. But you could just give them a definite time to be here, and hopefully, the meeting will be done by then. And if we had to be in the audience and wait a few minutes, I don't think it would, it would, you know, harm us in it.
It does, I mean, that's fine with me. We have generally told the public we're gonna hold executive session at the beginning of the meeting, so, you know, I mean, that's an undetermined amount of time as well as at the end. It's either way.
Well, I think the public can leave at the end because no action will be taken out of the executive session. So to have them sit for an hour or an hour and a half at 6:00 PM when we start the meeting, and then for us all to get here, adjourn, leave for an hour, hour and a half while they sit here, and then come back, is different than us holding the meeting, but they're here to see, and then at the end of the meeting saying, we're not gonna have any action, we're gonna have an executive session, and then everyone would be able to leave.
Why did we start doing it different in the first place, Debbie? Was there a reason?
I'm not sure. We just started doing that this, this last month.
I think we've had a couple of situations where it was attorney availability as well.
Okay.
Mr. Stewart, I think, preferred to come earlier, and that was accommodated. So I, I understand this. I guess I'm just unclear about voting on a protocol that you feel like we have?
Well, I don't think that we are.
Well, our protocols aren't really memorialized in writing, so the word protocol we've come up against before, you know, like what exactly that means.
Right. I think it would just be an expectation that we would schedule those at the end of our agenda so that the public doesn't have to wait an hour, two hours from when we begin the meeting for us to leave and then come back.
And I really have no issue with that, other than I just don't want it, if we have a profession, if we have an attorney coming, especially, I think this has happened twice with the litigation attorney. And they say that they would very much prefer to come at six because they're coming from Louisville, and there's, you know. I would, I would want to honor that. But, but you're, but you were thinking that that would not be like a situation where we would put it at the front?
I'm thinking that probably, since we're paying the attorney to be here, that if we set the time for after the meeting, that that would be, that would be okay. We've always done it that way in the past, you know, up until this, this year, frankly, the last couple of executive sessions. So I, I believe that, you know, when you're paying someone, you know, you know, if you pay them at 5:00 o'clock or if you pay them at 8:00 o'clock, you're still paying them versus the public. We have a lot of parents and educators who have to be in the school building. You know, they're, they're getting up at 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning.
So is, is opposed to putting it at the end of a meeting, are you suggesting that we actually have a separate meeting at 5? That's another alternative we could try.
End of the meeting is fine.
Or, or I, they may prefer to come at 5 and just get it, and then our regular meetings start at 6.
Yeah, I just think if we have a protocol, we can take case-by-case situations. Like if they were sick and needed to reschedule, we could take that case-by-case. If they needed to come early because of traffic or a festival, we could take that case-by-case. But if we just have a protocol, like this is our traditional, this is the way we're gonna do business. This is what we think is, you know, the right thing to do for the public and the right thing to do for our constituents, then that's just, if emergencies come up, I'm sure the public can accommodate or we can accommodate. But just as a general rule, a general protocol.
But that our first, our first, you know, and I agree, and I think we should do that. Our first go-to is that we hold it at the end of the meeting. Now, if the person we're having an executive session with cannot do that or it's difficult for them to do that, we could accommodate them by doing it at the beginning of the meeting, or we could have a separate meeting at 5:00 o'clock. I mean, that sounds like that's another alternative you could foresee. Because you said have a special meeting at 5.
Whatever, you know, is sufficient. I would prefer the protocol to be at the end of the agenda. You just put it on the end of the agenda after the last thing. But if we had to do something special, I'm, I'm very accommodating.
Okay. And I think honestly, because I did schedule kind of the last one, that it was very much preferred by Mr. Stewart that they come at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll, we'll be understanding those situations as well. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And I guess I'm still unclear if we vote on a protocol, what kind of.
Like we did last week.
Yeah.
Mr. Hawkins?
I think we're gonna need to look at our procedures for what protocols mean, because I'm, we really, that's not been something we've been enacting.
Yeah, I think a, a vote just kind of memorializes what the.
The intent, the intent, but, okay. So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes five, oh. Okay. All right, do we have any old business? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson.
You have the code of conduct you moved from.
Oh, yeah, I did, I'm so sorry, and I'm the one that did that. All right, so we're going to go now to what I removed from, moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and that is approved 2021 Code of Conduct Suggested Updates. The reason I wanted to move this is so we could have a little bit more discussion than we generally do in our consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Springgate, a second by Mr. Wilson, any discussion?
I had a couple of questions. Do you want to field those, or do you want Garrett to do it?
Probably Mr. Wells.
My question was on page 36, on the editing parent and legal guardian notes. I wondered, so are we invalidating those reasons or just trying to make it a more blanket?
Yeah, basically just removing the judgment call on the reason. So if there's a note and there's a reason, then it would be excused. Because right now, we have, we list some, and then the last one is other, other reasons that's approved by the principal, and that, it just creates the potential for a lot of inconsistency. You know, what one principal might excuse, another one might not. And so we feel like just, if you provide us a note and give us a reason.
We're not gonna.
It'll be, we're just taking the judgment call out of it.
Okay, so up through seven.
Correct.
No judgment calls after that goes, okay.
Or we are allowing for judgment calls by the principal? No, just taking that out completely?
Correct.
Any reason is a reason.
Okay.
Correct, and taking the judgment call out.
So the first seven are unquestioned? We're just taking a note?
If we get a note with a reason, it would be excused.
After seven, it requires a doctor's statement.
After seven, it would require a doctor's statement, yes, sir.
That was my question.
And I had a question about when they confiscate vaping items, and we're holding them for 30 days for parents to come and claim them. Don't know why we're not just destroying them immediately. I mean, they're illegal for kids to have in school. The age is 21 now. You know, the vaping crisis. I, I was just curious why we were going to hold on to them and let the parents come and, and pick them up.
Yeah, and this is, that is one of the topics I did have a conversation with Grant regarding. I'm obviously not an attorney, but it's, it's still the property of, so if you're a minor, whatever the minor has, that's the property of the parent. And when you take someone's property, there, there are some steps that you have to follow to be able to eventually discard that property. And one is giving notice, and one is giving time for that property to be picked back up.
Okay, so our other, like, contraband or whatever you wanna call that we confiscate from children or students, kind of the same, what if we confiscated a bottle of bourbon? Do we give the parents time to come and pick up that bottle of bourbon 30 days?
If we confiscated a bottle, bottle of bourbon, it's typically something we would work with law enforcement on, on dealing with that.
But vaping is also illegal for under 21.
It is, I just don't know that that's dealt with in the same manner that, that alcohol is dealt with.
Is the possession of vaping, you think, is different than the possession of alcohol legally? I mean, I'm not sure, I'm just kind of.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak, I don't wanna speak for law enforcement. I think it's, it seems to have been treated
Right.
with a little different emphasis.
Okay.
If someone has alcohol on them, so.
Okay, cuz I, I would just, if it's illegal, it's the same standing as like having alcohol, because it is illegal for kids to have that, that we would just destroy it. But if you've discussed it with Grant, then.
Yes, ma'am, I have.
Yeah, my preference would be just get rid of it immediately, but we'll do what, what he suggests.
I mean, he was okay with at some point discarding it, but he wanted to make sure that we gave ample notice and ample time for that to be picked up.
Okay, that was my, my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone else have any discussion or questions for Mr. Wells? Thank you, Garrett.
Do you want me to stay up for Raptor?
Oh, sure, are you gonna be talking about Raptor?
I mean, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, well, let's, let's get through this motion, and we'll see if there's any questions on that. All right, so we have a motion, and it's, there's no, is there any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2021 Code of Conduct Suggested Updates. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes five, zero. All right. Is there any old business? Okay, we'll go into our discussion items. The first item on discussion items is the Raptor Security Program Discussion. Ms. Springgate, is that yours?
Yes. I had just asked that we could be updated about this. I'm always just really impressed when, you know, Mr. Hawkins and his team is able to bring us just innovative and cost-efficient ideas for security. And when you had described that, I just thought it would be nice, maybe if you could kind of share that with everyone and let us know where that's at and what the plans are as far as other schools.
I'll speak briefly to it, and then I'll let Mr. Wells talk a little bit more specifically. But we became aware of, this is being utilized in some other schools and districts, particularly in central Kentucky. And Garrett took a team of some folks from here, our folk, the attendance clerks who check people in and out of the schools, and they went down and visited Boyle County, I believe, and saw it in action. It's one where you drop in your driver's license, and, and it does a quick check. Not necessarily a criminal check, but it does check the sex abuse registry. And then it also, you have to tell where you're gonna go, what time you're getting there, and based on your driver's license going in, then it prints out a sticker that has your picture on it, has your name on it, time in, time out. And so we are piloting that at Northside. We wanted to see how it would, it would function with the hope of being able to expand that to all schools next school year. But I don't know, Garrett, you, I know you've met with some of our team and kind of what their response has been so far.
Yeah, so far, I think it's been positive. Actually have a meeting on Wednesday with some front office staff from each one of our other schools. We're gonna meet at Northside, so they can see it as well. But so far, I think the implementation has gone well. There's been just a few technical issues getting it, getting it off the ground. But I think it's, it's working and providing us the information that we need. It's just, you know, another layer of safety and security to put in place for our students.
So do you think by the end of the year, we'll have good data on this and maybe hear from Northside and?
Yeah, that's, that's the hope.
So is it for every visitor drops in their?
Every visitor.
Drops in their driver's license? Great, that's great. All right.
Or ID, yeah.
This was kind of addressed in one of the sessions that I went to at KSBA with the gatekeeper training for front office staffs, and was heralded as a big advantage for them. So thank you for that.
And it alerts, so if, if someone were to drop their ID in, and it alerts that they are in the sex offender registry, then it automatically notify, well, whoever we set it up to notify, but the principal, the SRO in the building, myself, Chief Sutton, and whoever else we decide, needs to get that notification, automatically get a text and a phone call, so they can respond immediately to the situation.
Is that the main thing it alerts you to, sex offenders? Does it, would it alert you whether there was some kind of domestic violence restraining order? Or is it pretty much other things?
The system itself only does a search of the National Sex Offender Registry. But we can also custom, put custom alerts in. So if we know there's an EPO, if we know there's a DVO, we can put that information in ourselves. And so then regardless of, if we had it at all schools, regardless of what school that that particular person were to go to, it would automatically.
So we can kind of program it ourselves to pick up other items?
Yeah, anything that we put in on a particular individual, if that individual shows up at any one of our schools, if we have it at all of our schools,
Yeah.
it would automatically flag, yes.
That's great, that's great. I look forward to hearing more of it at Northside finishes their pilot. Are there any other questions? All right, the next item on the discussion is the public forum discussion. As we go forward to this next week, I know that Amy, I'm not sure Amy's here.
She is.
She's always high. Is working with a bonding agent, with other people to get it together. I also talked to several people in different districts this weekend, and, and I've decided that in an effort to hear from as many people as possible during the forum and be able to answer many questions as we can, we will allow everyone to submit questions by email before the event and in writing at the start of the forum. A moderator will read the questions and help keep the forum moving so that we can get through as many questions as we can. We hope that by taking questions over email, that anyone who cannot make it to the middle school but submits a question, or the high school, will get to hear the response by watching the video that will be posted online after the event. We think this will allow for more of a community to participate, whether in person or in line, online, and help make sure that everyone comes away with most information possible. So those are some of the guidelines. I'd like to see them up on the website.
Who will the questions be emailed to?
I think the questions should be emailed to you, maybe copy me on them, and then we can look at them. I think a lot of the questions will be the same, so hopefully, in order, again, to make it efficient, get the most topics covered, the most questions answered. If there's like duplicates, people are asking the same questions, we can go through it for that. I don't think that we would, I don't anticipate that you and I would edit or censor, or I don't think the board would want us to do that, other than just maybe get rid of some duplicates. Or questions that aren't necessarily on topic. The topic for the forum is the options for funding the high school and the financial considerations surrounding that, and kind of what the plans are so far, briefly, that have been drafted. So I do think that a lot of people, we always run into this, cannot make it, so this will give them the opportunity, more people to get their questions answered if we allow them to email them. So I, if we could put up on the website your email address and, and put in the subject matter line, community forum question, so you know, and copy me on them if they can, but we can look at them together. But again, I don't anticipate that we're gonna censor any questions. We'll just get rid of duplicates and make sure that people have an opportunity to ask a question if they don't have the ability to attend. Okay, any other thoughts about the public forum? I think that.
Do you wanna establish a cutoff time?
Well, I mean, maybe 24 hours before, so that Mr. Hawkins can have a. Well, I mean, maybe 24 hours before, so that Mr. Hawkins can have a chance to go through them. So we're having it on Tuesday night.
Close the Business Monday?
Yeah, Close the Business Monday, and then we can talk about them on Tuesday. So Close the Business on Monday. Again, if we can get this on the website immediately, we can share it through social media, and just let everybody be aware of that.
I did have a few suggestions, just to clarify. People would still be able to come to the forum and ask questions there?
Yeah, they can submit their written questions at the beginning of the forum. We can let them do that, and then we have them read. Again, I think, yeah, absolutely, they can submit written questions at the beginning of the forum.
And I did attend a session that was done by the Pritchard Committee. And so they had a lot of ideas and a lot of experience with forums, and with kind of bringing community together about, you know, difficult questions or big picture questions. So I really think that's something we should pursue and get their guidance and help with the future forums.
Right.
They really seem to know how to do it well, so that you're listening to your community, and then you're responding that way. But I would also like to say that I just want to piggyback on Mr. Hawkins' comments from last week. Surely, with a decision as big as this one, probably the biggest decision our board will ever make, we would want to, we don't want to limit ourselves or our constituents to just one public forum. My first thought is that the March 3rd meeting would give us an opportunity to listen, to share pertinent financial information and project information, and to listen to the community. The forum would allow the public to get questions answered and share their ideas. It would also allow the board to get some preliminary feedback, and once that feedback is haled, it would easily be shared with the community through various media outlets. Future forums could be, again, we could be assisted by the Pritchard Committee about how to do those listening sessions, and really get feedback from our community. And they could be based on also questions and information gleaned from this first session. Although there's no way to please everyone as we move forward, there should be a planned process. It needs to be planned, to ensure that everyone who wants to be heard on the subject is given an avenue to share their thoughts and ideas. And I really believe that in listening and in coming to this with an open mind, that sends the community the message that, that we are here to hear the pros and the cons, the short-term and the long-term consequences before moving forward. And, and I do believe that this session would be a great first step, but that there are absolute proven ways that communities such as Fayette with their safety nickel are able to use and involve the Pritchard Committee to kind of get that information from the community and then listen to that. Because I really believe that this needs to be a listening session. And I do worry that the message we sent tonight is, we're going to continue paying bills for this high school and moving forward, even though we're almost at a half a million dollars into that, instead of stopping and listening to all the ideas, looking at all of the options, and really being open to what our community is saying.
Okay, I'm not sure what session that was. That looks like great information. If you have an op, if you have the, you know, the computer ability or whatever, make copies for all of us and send it out. And I would encourage any of us, if we heard good things at KSBA and received handouts or written information, that we share that with the rest of the board. All right, is there any other, let's talk about the public forum discussion. Okay, we'll have our meeting noticed. I'm sure that it's a special meeting and all that. Okay, the next one was 2021 budget including revenues and expenses. This was mine. I really feel like we need a work session on this. And I was hoping maybe we could get something together for next week to just, you know, we've gotten some information from Mr. Hawkins now. I think there's maybe some other information that we'll receive at the forum. There's the legislature's in effect, in session, so there's lots of stuff coming out of there. So I was hoping that we could schedule a work session on the budget for next week. My first proposal is Thursday, which is March 4th. Does that look good for people? On March 5th, I'm sorry, March 5th? You're out of town on the 5th? Who was, who said that? Allison? I know we don't want to meet on Wednesdays. I think it would be helpful to do it after the forum.
At the 10th?
I, what do I have on the, oh, that's Industry Day. Yeah, I could do it on the 10th.
Could we do it earlier on the 10th?
Yeah, what time are we done with that Industry Day with the high school?
Be done before school's out, so.
Yeah, I could definitely do it earlier on the 10th. Sherry, could you do it earlier on the 10th?
I cannot do it until after work.
So what time is that?
I could do it anywhere 5:30, 6:00.
Okay, 5:30 on the 10th. Are we good with that? Everybody okay? All right, I can't believe it, that was easier than usual. We will schedule a work session for 5:30 on the 10th at the board office. And again, we'll get that all noticed, so. That was the only thing.
And I did have a comment about the expenses and revenues aside them.
Could you do it at the work session, or?
Well, I probably would like to go ahead and do it now, so that maybe it can kind of help guide some, some things that we do at the work session.
Okay.
On June 24th, the board voted 3 to 2 to approve the BG1 restricting $288,000 of capital outlay and $600,000 of general fund. If you remember, Mr. Hawkins cautioned the board of the short and long-term implications of this decision. But the board, acting on its own, with an idea that we came up with, went ahead and approved that. The board never inquired as to what the implications might be moving forward with that decision. Sadly, some members of the board have now become angry with Mr. Hawkins for speaking out on this matter, as if his silence would have changed the outcome.
Ms. Springgate, I'm going to ask, and I'm, this is another thing I learned at KSBA, that we keep our comments to what's on the agenda. So if you have issues about revenues and expenses, we have scheduled a work session, but I would hope that you would, I ask that you keep your comments specifically to anything about the revenues and expenses.
This is absolutely about the revenues and expenses. The reason that we have a revenue and an expense issue is because we took general fund money on our own and set it aside for this new high school, creating the deficit that we currently have. And so what I was going to ask was that we really need to go ahead and come up with a written plan detailing the financing for the new high school, as well as an explanation. We need to go ahead and finalize and approve the 2021 budget, so that we can understand what the revenues and the expenditures, how they will affect that decision. I certainly don't want to have another year like we've had for the past two, where we spend the revenue and then somehow don't understand that that's going to cause a million-dollar deficit for our last fiscal year. We're on track this fiscal year to spend the revenue and be a million and a half down in deficit. And then the fiscal year that's coming up, from the budget projections we've been given by Ms. Smith at the January meeting, showed that we would be $1.8 million in deficit spending. So what I'm saying is, instead of spending the money and then trying to figure out where to get the money, what I'm saying is, our expenses and our revenue is something we need to consider, and have a written plan for the community, and really just for us, so that we can understand how we can do these things. We certainly don't want to be caught off guard again this year, because we're choosing to have expenses and choosing to take that money from general fund to spend towards one expenditure, even though the superintendent at the last meeting has said, you know, that would be my recommendation to cut that. So the discussion is about revenue and expenses.
All right, thank you. And we'll, oh, Ms. Bradley?
Well, I think in response to that too, and Mr. Hawkins can probably clarify, I think there's a lot of things that are subject to change in the next month or month and a half with the budget coming from the state. Mr. Hawkins, maybe you can talk a little bit about the, if the FSPK allotment stays the same, how that affects us going forward?
I mean, that could...
Well, go ahead, I don't mean to interrupt, but these are all things I anticipate we would talk about in our work session.
Sure. I mean, that, that can dramatically impact our bonding. However, it is very early in the process, and that is the governor's proposal. The House hasn't come up with their proposal yet, nor has the Senate. And so we are still well over a month away from knowing if that will happen, and what, what final impact that might be, because there could be multiple changes along the way with the budgeting process.
If it were approved, and obviously I'm acknowledging everything, it has a big process to go still, but if it were approved now, how would that affect our bonding?
Well, we're still waiting on some final numbers from Kelly on the different scenarios with the FSPK.
And I think she'll have those next week at the forum, right?
I, I hope that she will.
Yeah.
But we're still, we're still waiting on some of those numbers. We know some, but we don't know all of them.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have a work session planned for March 10th. And any other discussion items?
Can't add any.
Oh, can't, can't even say that we went to the wrestling outfit, I guess, that's right, anyway. Lots of good things happening, so turn me in for going off the agenda. All right, we have our information items, fundraiser report, donation report, energy management report, those are written only. Do we have any reason to go into executive session? Okay, do I, what is this? Is that leftover from last?
I think it's leftover.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Although, do we need to do the finance court?
We have to have a finance court meeting to do that. Did we miss that this year? Well, those officers are for two years.
No, no, but because the board and vice, I mean, the chair and vice chair changed, that could change the president and vice president of the, we would probably need to do that in March, the finance court.
Is it, is it okay to wait till March, or could we do, have a quick finance court meeting before our work session on the 10th?
We could probably do that.
I could create a special one, just go in the meeting, relax.
Just do the four, and then go, go out and go right into our work session? Okay. Either way, it's, it's, it's okay to, either way.
Yeah.
I would just assume do it at the work session, since we're a little later than usual on that. All right, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Eland, I wanted to, the superintendent brought up the, now checked, and you can say wrestling if you're from the South, so, but people on our wrestling team. I would also like to, to recognize that we have several girls who are on the wrestling team, and they participated in the state wrestling girls tournament, that, the coaches tournament at Tate Creek High School a couple of weeks ago. And Woodford County came in third, and we had two state champions. And they have a very, I believe, a very inspiring story about becoming state champions and what this is going to do in their next phases of their life. And if there's, if there is no objection, I'd like to, to invite those two to our March,
I think we always, yeah.
March board meeting to recognize them as state champions and to hear their story. I think they'd be very, very inspired by it. So if there's no objections, Madam Chairperson, I would ask that you put that on the agenda.
Okay. On that side note, I will say, I was very impressed that the city of Versailles recognized one of those young women, because she also wrestled, not from the South, I say wrestled for, with the boys team for Woodford County and won. And the city of Versailles recognized her for that. So good for our community partners for also recognizing the things that our students are doing. All right, now do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry, you're so quiet down there.
Go ahead. I just wanted to say that Saturday, we held dance gold at the high school, and it was a huge success. We raised over $600,000 for the...
$600,000?
Oh, no, $6,000.
We're putting you on the high school fundraising.
Yeah, so we raised over $6,000, and we had over 100 participants attend, and it was a really great community event, and I'm very proud of all the work that our high school and our students and our staff did to do that, so, yeah.
Good, congratulations, thank you, thank you.
$6,000.
That's amazing as well.
And when you, when you think about all the, all the other high schools that will be doing that, and the total that would bring for pediatric cancer at UK, it's just unbelievable.
We're very fortunate to have a lot of, a lot of help, and especially from our community and our students and our staff, and it was, it was a really good event. I was very pleased, and I was very proud to say I contributed.
Good, good job, good job. All right, now do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, have a motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Springgate. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0.